Welcome, everybody. I am reconvening to order the regular meeting of the Fairview District 72 Board of Education. It is December 21st, 2022 at 7:02 PM. We have already established that we have a quorum. I'd just like to revise ask people to double check that their cell phones are silenced and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so first item of business this evening is to approve the minutes of the regular and closed session meetings of November 16th and November 30th, 2022. Can I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Okay, in that case, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The minutes are approved. Moving along. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of 1,900, no, I'm sorry, $1,919,995.84. Our motion?
Second.
Are there any questions about the bills? Good. In that case, could the secretary please call a roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tia Kakis?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Guliana?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoi?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Excellent. Bills are paid. So PTA report, do we have a representative? Oh, excellent, from PTA this evening.
Good evening. Thank you all who were able to attend the Moritz PTA Benefit Night on December 14th. The upcoming events are the PTA General Meeting on June 11th via Zoom and PTA Winter Dance and Bingo Party on January 27th from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Also, we would like to thank everyone who has contributed to Fairview South PTA this year, and we look forward to create a memorable 2023. Thank you.
Well, thank you for everything you've done this first semester. Definitely a full revision of all the activities that you used to do. It's great. Thank you. So school activity report. Is there any good news that the board or administration would like to share?
I will just share in Mr. Lapaca's absence. He is at District 219 cheering on our varsity girls' basketball team who's playing for the championship as we are meeting currently. So Mike, I told him he had to represent us at the game, and he'll be texting me an update when the game is over. We have a friendly wager between District 74 Dr. Russo and Fairview 72. If Fairview's girls win the game, he's going to buy them lunch, and if his girls win the game, I'll be buying them lunch. So, you know, when you have your former Assistant Superintendent over at the district next door, you gotta, you know, have a little friendly bet. So that's good news from Mr. Lapaca. I don't know if there are other members of the team out there that have something to share. Mrs. Larkin?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to share that in the month of December, our music department has been really busy. So with Mr. Connor and Ms. Messino, they have led some really incredible choir and band and orchestra concerts. Today, we had the fourth grade concert for band and orchestra, and then over the course of really the past three weeks, a lot of evening performances led by Ms. Messino and Mr. Connor and just rave reviews. The kids have grown so much since the beginning of the year, and just I was talking to a parent this morning that said to me, gosh, Colleen, I was moved to tears at one of the evening concerts led by Mr. Connor. So just huge kudos to our music department here at Fairview and all of our kids for all their hard work. I think they loved every minute of being back on stage and performing for all of our community members, and it was really nice to have people back in the building. So some definite, some highlights in December. We also had a great Pack the Place event last Friday for our girls' basketball, who were victorious over East Prairie, which was great. And then a special thanks to everyone that contributed, all of their items for our Pack the Pantry. It's just another showing of how amazing this community is, taking care of others who need our support really in these times. So, thank you.
I wanted to just echo, I had an opportunity to attend the band and orchestra concerts last week and the week before, and they were fantastic. The kids were wonderful. The auditoriums were packed for both events, and it was, it was really great to see. So thank you to Mr. Connor and Ms. Messino for putting on such wonderful shows for the community.
And I just wanted to share that we had, for the first time, an opportunity to work with a student intern for our speech department, our speech pathology department from Northwestern. It was the first time we've had a student graduate student, and it was a really great experience for us, for her, and for our students. It was something that we will probably want to do again.
Excellent. Definitely new. Are we good? We're good. Anything for the board? No?
As our girls play, I just want to say, go Falcons!
Go Falcons, absolutely. So we're gonna keep a score update. What time do we think the game's gonna be done?
You know, I'm not sure, but I won't be looking at my phone too much, but I'll let you know.
Well, for that, and if we win, if we lose, then it's okay. You can just keep it quiet. Yeah. Okay, so done with that. So we're on to our administrative reports, and our first report this evening, we are going to meet Alana Bedard. I actually did meet Alana already at the ISB conference that I attended at the end of November. Alana is our new Field Services Director. So you may remember Dean Mullinari that helped us with training in the past. Well, Alana has taken over that position. Alana is also new to ISB, certainly not new to the world of education at all, but I'll let you introduce yourself, and she just wanted to come along this evening and talk about what it is that ISB does for us.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. As Mrs. Brown indicated, my name is Alana, and I'm your Field Service Director from the Illinois Association of School Boards, and I would like, I am very grateful to have this opportunity to spend maybe about 10 minutes just giving you a snapshot of some of the work we're doing right now. What are some of the big topics for other school boards right now, and really let you know that there are multiple ways that we can serve you. So I'm just going to go into a little bit of description, but the-
Just really quickly, can you introduce your colleague who's with you today, too?
Yes, I'm just about to do that. Thank you. Thank you for that. So before we introduce ourselves, I just want to honor the work that you're doing as a school board to really ensure that each and every student in your, your building is having the highest quality education. I thank you for your service on behalf of ISB. I have, I'm a 30-year-plus educator, and so I've been in and around schools as both a teacher, curriculum person, administrator, and so I feel such a, it's such an honor for me to be able to work with school boards very directly at this leg of my professional journey. I also want to introduce, she's moving around a little bit, my colleague, Dr. Williams McMahon, who is also a Field Service Director. Within ISB, we divide up the state into different divisions, and so we complement each other in terms of the work we're doing across the state. So I'm delighted she's able to join us as well. So two purposes. One, for you to meet me and my colleague, and two, for you to have a stronger sense of what ISB can offer you. Just a little background for about a minute, in terms of ISB, want to point out that it's a voluntary organization, a loose network of school boards across the state. So here's a quick quiz question for you, and we do have a prize, and that is, can anyone identify the number of school boards that we have in the state of Illinois? Tick tock, tick tock.
I'll take a guess.
Okay.
Yeah. Because I learned it through ISB. I think it's about 930?
Good guess. You went over, so there's, there's an opportunity.
Okay. It's below 900 now. There's some merged. Okay, so I've took-
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Oh, well, I've given you a-
Would anyone, do we have another colleague? A little higher?
No.
We're really warm. Let's get, let's, one more chance. Yes. Ah, we're getting warmer. So, so we do have, before we part company, we do have some prizes. So actually, there are 850 school boards in the state of Illinois. We were warm, and-
I can't do the-
848 of those school boards are members of the Illinois Association of School Boards. So it's a, it's a vast network within the state of Illinois, lots of opportunities for networking. The other little factoid I'd like to share is that ISB has been in existence for over 100 years. Our sole purpose is to support you. You may already know that this is a completely member-driven organization. Our Board of Directors are comprised of school board members, leadership across the division, those are school board members, important decisions around policies, school board members make. So it's very much a member-driven organization. We do have an executive director who is hired by the Board of Directors, and then that executive director supervises field service directors and other staff people. And we have offices in both Springfield and Lombard. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background. Now I would like to highlight the work that we do, and I have to start by pointing to our vision. Our vision as an organization, and this has been the vision for decades, has been to ensure the highest quality local school governance structures and processes that support quality public education, so that each student has the very best experience. We do that by ensuring that we have a robust toolkit, resources, people, connections, networking opportunities to support our school board members, so that they're able to develop the confidence and competence to do the very best job. I'll get to that in a little more detail in just a moment, but I also want to highlight that we're not a standalone organization. I mean, we are technically, but we're part of a national organization called COSBA. So not only do our members benefit from the networking and the relationships within the state of Illinois, we have partnerships across the nation. So we find that this really enhances the work that we do and the services that we provide. So just a few notes. I know you have a real busy schedule. I did bring some brochures and information for you to review, but I'd like to highlight just a couple of things. First of all, you will notice that there are, there's a lot of depth to our organization as well as breadth. So I believe you may already have some experiences with our policy department. You may have a subscription with Press Plus, which means that we have an Office of General Counsel and policy team that, teams that help school boards develop their, their policies, make sure they're in compliance with the laws and that sort of thing. So that's a big part. Our policy department has other offerings as well, but that's the biggie. We have a lot of training and networking opportunities for school board members, for teams in terms of in-network support, which I know you're familiar with, as well as individuals. You already know, how many of you went to our annual conference? So we had representation definitely at our annual conference. That's a biggie. That's a great opportunity to network and really learn the latest with how school boards are, it's a complex role and how we're managing that. So I just wanted to highlight that. And of course, there are other things we do includes, including lobbying and other things to really help ensure that school board members' voices are heard on many different levels. But there are two specific things I want to highlight, because we're in a very special time as we move into our elections. And so I wanted to highlight, I believe you've probably done a self-evaluation before, maybe? And that's an opportunity where maybe Ms. Dr. Mullinari or one of my, or another colleague comes in and really works with the board to reflect on processes, because it's what we do and it's how we do it as well. So this is a really great time for boards to think about. I'm getting a lot of calls right now, so I just want to throw that out there to you. And the question is, I mean, some boards are saying, we're going to wait till we have our new members, and then we're going to pull everybody together. Other boards are saying, you know what? We want to make sure we really tighten up our processes and make sure they're explicit now before bringing on our new members, so it's less of a lift for them. I mean, we know it's a heavy lift anyhow. So I wanted to highlight that, if that's something you may be interested as a board, and of course, we can customize that experience. The other thing I want to highlight is, when you have your new board members, you already know there's the mandatory training. I know we went, gone through that ourselves. I would just want to point out that on our website, we have a lot of resources for candidates as well, the people, the folks in your community who are running for the board, so they can learn more about that. I'd like to highlight that some of our members also run orientations within their, for candidates, for people who are running before the elections. So people have a strong sense of what it means to be a board member, what it looks like, what it sounds like. And of course, I have to highlight, they try to build in support after the election, too, because how many of you remember that initial experience? Was anyone a little bit overwhelmed? Maybe just a little bit. And so what, we can't really take all of that away because of the responsibilities with this role, but we can try to help ease people in, so they feel that they're moving, that this was a good decision, and they have a lot to offer. So my visit here today was to say hi and to thank you for your efforts, and also just to remind you of that because you are members, you have access to most of these resources because they're built into your membership fee. There are a few services where there's a little bit of an extra service fee, but most of them are available to you. So please, visit our website, please give me a call, and let me know how I can better support you, best support you, as you continue on your journey as a board. I tried to keep it short and sweet.
Thank you. That was excellent. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Well, I really appreciate you coming along this evening, and we are happy that you can get in and do your presentation. Thank you for bringing some materials along with you. I mean, I, I hope that, I know we have multiple candidates that are going to be, you know, on the ballot in the spring, so I hope that they will watch this recording and learn from what you're presenting. It is as much for them as it is for the current board members. People have said to me, you know, well, Mary Ann, you know everything, and I would credit ISB, I really would, because I've done so many trainings. I've been to every single conference. I've been to every single dinner, the bar about three in 12 years, and, you know, it's getting that wider perspective of how boards operate outside of our own little world here that really, really helps you learn. So thank you very much, both of you. You were a bonus. Thank you. Thank you both for coming along this evening and giving us that information, and, well, it'll be up to the new board about exactly scheduling a, a training with you, but I anticipate that they will be in touch with you shortly.
I look forward to it. I wish you a wonderful holiday season.
Yes, you too. Thank you very much for having. Thank you. Please.
Yeah, we have your snacks for later. We'll-
Oh, excellent. Did I win? Maybe. Thank you. Okay, and we're segueing in to policy from press, as introduced by- So I actually reviewed a stack of paper. I am not kidding. It was this thick in the last week or so, and it did take me a while to put it all together, because there were actually 54 policies that needed review. Sometimes it's just a page, sometimes it's several pages, but I went through the whole lot, and I narrowed it right down to those that needed, just basically to be reviewed and commented on, because there were some changes in the actual policy itself. If there was just changes in legal references, I did not include them in this list, because the policy itself hadn't changed, or maybe a very small change in the language. Often, there are some that are up for a five-year review, and those also often don't change at all, so I didn't include those. So I, I want to just quickly run through these with a view that we will do most of the heavy lift on this, in this particular meeting, and then we will be able to just wiz through and put these for a vote in the next meeting in January. So first one, board member conflict of interest. This actually expands the definition of conflict of interest. It removes the word business, and so it's not business partner, but it's just any type of partner. So it can be your spouse, or your friend, or your buddy, or whatever it can be, and it redefines the language to specify the members of the immediate, board members of immediate family. Those are the, that's the change in that one, that it redefines who it actually is that you would be connected with, that would cause a conflict of interest. Second one, four colon 10 is finance, fiscal and business management. This is something that's going to fall to Mr. Fair, that the district is required to disclose the cash reserve balance of funds at the levy and also at the budget hearings. Waiver of student fees is a revision on the eligibility for student fees. It also includes now fines that might be levied by a school district in addition to a fee, as in if, if the fee isn't paid, then it would be fine, or some kind of fine for damage to property or something like that, like if the computers get damaged. So now it's going to run along the same guidelines as the free lunch program, but in addition, there is a new specification that students who have a parent or guardian that's on active military, military duty with an income of below 200% of the poverty line would also get theirs free. And also, any student that's homeless, as defined by the McKinney-Vento Act, which would include all our newcomers that we've recently had. So four column 165 is awareness and prevention of child sexual abuse and grooming behaviors. It adds the term employee-student to the section relating to that concerning the employees, the specific policy that relates to employees.
Can I interrupt for a quick second, Mary Ann?
Sure.
There's no action item on beats, right?
We're acting next month. That's why I'm trying to do the heavy lift now.
Okay, so the acting, the action comes next month.
Yeah. So five column 120, employee ethics. That is completely new and rewritten. So this is greatly expanded with a new section called professional and appropriate conduct, which is considerable addition to the, to the policy. Five column 220, substitute teachers. This is in line with the law, which expands the amount of days that a teacher can sub in a particular position in the school year from 90 to 120, and it also separates out the rules for short-term subs. There is, why, the reason I've highlighted that is there did seem to be some conflict between the summary document and the actual policy itself as to the change for short-term subs. In the policy, it said, goes from five days unless there's a state of emergency, in which case it's 30 days, but the packet, the summary said 15 days. So we're looking into that, and we'll get that clarified by next month as to exactly what that should be. So leaves of absence, five column 250. This basically adds the language that mental and behavioral health complications was also included in the definition of being sick. And child bereavement has been expanded to family bereavement, which covers the number of days that an employee can take for bereavement. There's also the new language around the law that administrative leave taken for COVID-19 can be returned to the employee. We need to decide if we want to have an additional sentence, which would require the employees to participate in a district COVID-19 testing program. We don't do that at the moment, is that correct? And we don't, we don't require employees to participate in a district-
No.
COVID testing program.
We do not.
No. That we can think about, and it's not written in the policy at the moment. It would be an additional sound, sentence, so we'd actually have to decide if we want to add that or not. We'll make that decision next month. Five column 280, duties and qualifications. It changes the term from non-certified to non-licensed. That's just the new language that is used now. It also adds that non-licensed personnel can be used as supervisors, chaperones, et cetera, if there is a governor declared disaster. Sick days, vacation days, holidays and leaves, which is five column 330, adds that same definition as we talked about in the other one, that mental and behavioral health complications is auto under the definition of sick. Assemblies and ceremonies, that language adds language that says while the district respects an individual's religions, observances, but it still has the policy that says the district does not endorse or promote any invocations, benedictions, or prayer at school. This came about from the guy that was kneeling down at the halfway line recently. Six column 260, complaints about curriculum. It changes the term persons to parents, guardians, employees, and community members, so that's more specific and more expanded. Seven column 50, school admissions and student transfers to and from non-district schools. That includes more specific language of the role of DCFS. Seven column 70, that adds the new language that attendance at a civic event is also a valid reason for a student absence, and student behavior can't beat the number. That one is new language stating that the school district prohibits use of isolated timeout, timeout, any timeout or physical restraint. That's come up before, and that's been added into various policies. Seven column 250 also adds that language about the requirement to have a liaison with DCFS, and seven column 340 also has language requiring that DCFS would be one of the entitled persons that can inspect student records. And that's it. That was my homework at the weekend, and I think I put the page in the board packet on there. That's the page in this board packet, so if you are looking at it next month, at next month's board packet, that's not to say that it's going to be the same page number. So if you do want to reference those specific policies, use this month's board packet for reference. So does anybody have any questions or things that they want to bring up about that? Okay, so I think I've summarized it for you so that you'll be able to make a decision on it all next month. Okay, so moving along, the 2023-24 and 2024-25 school calendar discussion.
Okay, I have included a memo summarizing the calendar proposal. I'm just going to go through and hit the highlights. Please, members of the Education Technology Committee, jump in here if there's anything you want to add, since we did discuss this previously. We were very anxious to draft the 23-24 school year calendar for the community and the teaching community, because with construction going on, everyone was kind of anticipating, you know, what is this summer going to look like? How is it going to affect next school year? And so when I would normally bring this proposal to the board, in January, February, we really tried to push the timeline so that parents and teachers could plan accordingly for the next school year. I also traditionally packaged two years of the calendar at a time, and I thought that was particularly important this year, so that the community and the staff could see that once we get into the 24-25 school year, we do return to a more typical school calendar. So while I've typically, for the last several go-arounds on calendars, I have provided two, two years, a look ahead. We're doing that again this year, and I think it's even more important this year. So with that being said, the highlights of the 23-24 school year, we have been asked by our construction company to give them as much time as possible to finish the building. We've had a few bumps in the road. to give them as much time as possible to finish the building. We've had a few bumps in the road. And while we're slightly behind schedule, they've assured us they believe they can catch up. Um, but they feel, you know, that it would be a great benefit to all of us to be able to elongate the summer if possible. So um, the way in which the school year would be for our students would be that they'd be starting with the typical half day of school following Labor Day. And our staff would begin with two full institute days uh on the Thursday and Friday prior to Labor Day. Uh, we believe that the staff are gonna need as much time as possible because a great majority will be in boxes and moving into new spaces. And so to have the time to unpack once construction's finished, get set for the arrival of the children will be very helpful. Um, in order to not have our school year go too far into June, um, we looked for days within the calendar that we would normally have a non-attendance day or a day off um so that we might be able to gain some school days within the school year rather than just simply adding them all on to the end of the school year. Um, in this calendar, uh, we have school finishing um around uh June twelfth. I've spoken with the Skokie Park District because many of our students participate in their summer camp programs. Um, and they aren't sure when camp will start that summer. Um, and so, you know, what they've told me is that it will be fairly close to our finishing date. Um, but for Fairview families, because of our school calendar, if they do sign up for camp, they will work with them to do a prorated sort of um, uh, cost for those days that students wouldn't be able to attend camp. Um, so I thought that was important to point out. Um, we've also had conversations with two nineteen as to when they'll be finishing school. Um, and when their summer school program, more importantly, will be starting so that our eighth graders will be able to start um, two nineteen summer school if they choose to go to summer school um and not miss a beat there. So we've tried to um really think through the impacts of a a little bit longer school year. Um, the non-attendance days that I spoke of um that we're proposing eliminating would be Veterans Day and President's Day. Um, that gets us a couple of days. And like I said, that would allow us to finish school um around uh the sort of that June twelfth day. So uh, it's really, you know, the best that we could come up with, with the required number of days we have in the school year. Um, you know, really didn't wanna go into that third week of June because that feels really long. And by summertime, I think everybody's ready to be done with school. Um, and thought that those few days within the school calendar probably wouldn't be missed quite as much. So um, I would like to start out by taking questions from the board on the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar, and then we can take a look at that twenty-four, twenty-five. And certainly Diana or Nora, if you wanted to jump in from our conversation the other day.
Forgot to ask you, did um, did you ask the teachers like how they felt about it? I don't remember.
Yeah, um, so the Fairview Teachers Association um provides representatives to kind of sit down with me and and walk through it and take a look. Um, and then they go back to their membership and have conversation with them and and dialogue about the calendar. And um, you know, the general consensus was a sort of a sense of relief that we weren't going so far into June. Um, you know, and that while there are many full, full weeks of school with no breaks, um, we just felt that it was more important to finish at that point in June than to, you know, sort of have those little breaks throughout the year. So um, so I, you know, Nick, you can certainly jump in if you want to. Um, you know, I think that the teachers' union felt, you know, comfortable with the calendars as proposed. Heads nodding, yeah.
My only, I just thought of this now, but is there any chance that construction would delay opening?
So uh, construction will not delay opening school. What it could delay is some of our movement into new spaces. So our current plan, if construction were to run long, would be to focus on opening the new library as well as the third, fourth grade and special education classrooms and that new part of the building. So that's at the very front, right on Laramie. That would be the first portion that we would try to have opened. Okay. Um, the um addition on the south end, um, the preschool, we aren't prepared to open in the fall of twenty-three anyway. Um, so if those classrooms aren't ready, it doesn't matter. We have a year to finish those. Um, there would also be the district office moved over that way, um kindergarten classes. But we would have enough extra classroom space by opening the front portion of the building that we could leave people kind of where they are. It doesn't prevent them from packing and being ready to move, but um we would be able to open school on time. The calendar would remain the same.
And my other thought is for incoming kindergarten families that aren't part of our cycle, how do we get this information to them?
Sure. So kindergarten registration, for anyone who knows kindergarten, future kindergarteners is gonna be in February um of twenty-three. And so at that point in time, the calendar would be approved. We could let them know as they're registering when the first day of school would be with, we would give them the calendar, et cetera. The exact location of their classrooms, they wouldn't be, you know, learning at that time anyway. Okay, okay. So moving on to twenty-four, twenty-five, this will be quick. Um, our first day of school will be closer to August twentieth, which is when the township typically starts school. Um, we do have calendar guidelines that the high school, as well as the nine elementary schools all agree to. Um, the exception is if you're doing construction. Um, and then you don't have to abide by those guidelines, but we would move back to following the township guidelines. Um, the typical school holidays would return. So the ones that I mentioned will be back in the calendar. And the last day of school would be June third, which is a more typical ending time for us here at Fairview. Questions?
Questions? No, I mean, I think it's just, you know, what we have to do if we're under construction is the, the only way of doing it basically. And and it's just one year. So and I don't think actually finishing on June tenth seems that late because I remember that being around the time my kids always used to finish.
It's not that bad. Um, and in the best case scenario, we're ready to go and now we just have some extra time. Um, you know, but we have to plan for it now so people can, you know, arrange childcare.
Yep.
Um, staff can arrange, you know, for their own children and whatnot. So um, you know, this, I would expect if the board approves this tonight, this will be the calendar going forward without many changes. Um, you know, election day is still kind of out there. We haven't heard any decisions about whether that's gonna be a required holiday. So there may be some, I guess what I'm trying to say, there may be some amendments to this calendar or for the second year of this cycle. Um, but we'll have to take that as it comes.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Okay, well, this will be an action item at the end of the evening, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, next, the superintendent's report. Do you have anything?
Sure. Um, you know, just a few other highlights from my um report. We're beginning to look at staffing for next school year, starting those conversations um with the Education Technology Committee, but also um amongst the administrative team, looking at our projections for different um programs, special education, ELL, et cetera. Um, so that process really starts to kick in after the first of the year. Um, we continue to um monitor the situation with our newcomers. Um, as the resettlement process starts to um happen, we are, we've seen at least uh one family move out of Skokie. Um, and so we're, we're closely monitoring that because um as it has been since day one, with all of this communication is very poor. And we don't always know what's gonna happen. So it makes it really difficult for us to plan. Um, we're planning on keeping our programming for our newcomers the same until after winter break. Uh, and we're going to reassess our numbers at that point in time um to see how many students are still with us. Um, but there seems to be some movement and a lot of conversation um about moves. And, you know, the frustrating thing for us is that, you know, these, these children have been through trauma after trauma after trauma. And the fact that we can't help support them and knowing what moving is all about and that it's not necessarily a bad thing, um, that you can stay connected with your old friends or new friends um is very frustrating to us. So I could carry on about that for quite some time, but I won't. Um, let's see.
We had a roof leak?
We had a roof leak um in a third grade classroom due to our construction. Um, it was relatively minor but annoying. Um, and um, we're able to figure that out. Um, and that has been fixed. And snow removal uh this winter is um particularly confounding for us because we have such limited space. Um, but Cassio has been working with our construction company um and our team to really rethink the way we move snow and where we put snow. Um, so we're gonna be able to test that out, I think, uh, in very short order.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Um, and that would be the last thing I'll mention. Um, it was a very hard decision for the township schools to come to. Um, being the, for many of us, uh, tomorrow, the last day prior to winter break and an opportunity for students to sort of celebrate the end of a semester and um, you know, looking towards break. However, um, after listening to multiple National Weather Service webinars and talking with my colleagues in the township, we were very uncomfortable with what could occur. Um, the forecast has been very consistent since Monday. Um, while we don't think there's gonna be a large amount of snow, the conditions are just going to be treacherous with the wind gusts up to fifty-five miles per hour. Um, and the temperature is dropping really rapidly prior to dismissal. Um, so, you know, the thought of having students being dropped off at corners for their bus stops and walking home and staff having to drive home, um, it just didn't feel like it was worth taking the chance of anybody's safety or well-being prior to the holidays. So about fi- I think it's five of the nine Niles Township Schools are closed Thursday and Friday. Uh, the other four, um, two had a planned half day for tomorrow, which is looking like that's probably the sweet spot um with the way the storm is shaking out. Um, typically, Fairview hasn't been able to do half-days because for our working parents, it's very difficult to manage, especially sort of in the last minute. Um, we also know it's very difficult to manage a full day. Um, but in this instance, uh, it just seemed as though, you know, being more conservative and um just taking the safest alternative seemed to the best, be the best. So that day will be made up at the end of the year. Um, we are not doing remote learning tomorrow. Um, that is another piece of this uh that we consider when we're closing school. Tomorrow will be considered just an old-fashioned snow day. Um, which is why we'd be making it up at the end of the year. If we were flipping to remote learning for for that day, um, we wouldn't have to make it up, and that's certainly something we'll consider um down the road. But um, to to do that for tomorrow, considering the time of the year and the excitement that's going on with our students, trying to have them join onto computers for five hours tomorrow, didn't seem to make a whole lot of sense. So um, that's kind of where we're at. Um, big uh time-consuming watching this weather for the last few days, but um, you know, I know it's oh, never a decision that everybody feels great about. Um, some people love it, some people hate it, but um, you know, had to make a decision. So that's where we're at. Any questions about anything in the report that I didn't touch upon? Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to our board committees and representatives. The first one on my list is the Education Technology Committee. So you're reporting.
Sure. Um, DeeDee and I met with administration last week. Feel free to jump in. A bunch of the things were already covered. The calendar was a big one. We had a really awesome and robust conversation about that. And yeah, I think it just makes so much sense. And the fact that this board or the administration talked to the park districts and the high school and like it was just a very thoughtful put-together. Cindy even shared her like matrix of thinking for the process. So uh, I think that, you know, the board should definitely adopt what they came up with. Um, we also talked about the future of the foreign language program here at Fairview. Um, and that the high school has such a wide variety. It was a really great conversation about and date, lots of data points about where our Fairview kids end up mostly at Niles West in their language. So what languages do they choose? How many of them continue Spanish? Um, what level of Spanish do they enter at? So we really had a conversation about what we, you know, where we wanna go with that. Mr. LaPaca shared some ideas on um how to either invest in sort of the Spanish program and curriculum. Do we do it at just middle school? Do we expand it? A couple of years? Do we make it a resource class? Um, so we just started to kind of chew on that idea. I think we all agreed that it is an important offering and we, we definitely wanna keep it. Um, and what it will look like is, I think, gonna evolve over time. Um, I think the students currently are feeling really excited about, I know personally, excited about the learning that's happening right now and and kind of getting, I hear it in my house and there's some sea legs under it. Like there's, there's some solid structure to what's happening. Um, you know, whether that leads to high school, they will, they have such an opportunity to choose so many languages that if we can give them just a foundation here, I think it's a great send-off. Um, but we did talk about it needing some tightening or some adjusting. Um, and that, I think, do you wanna, is that good? And then um, one great idea, one thing that administration shared is when we do the um curriculum adoptions, when we go through like the socialized curriculum and the science curriculum, and we have community members join like an instructional team, look at different materials and different um publishers, how to get more input from the community, right? And one way to do that would be to survey, like have webinars from, so our next big curriculum is math. So our math consultant would put together some webinars that then would go out to the community. Community members could watch the different presentations about the different curriculums and what they have to offer. And then do like a quick survey so that we get some input from the community rather than having, I forgot what the meetings were called.
Yeah, just one person.
Like we had one community member on a curriculum decision team. So I think that's a great um move on getting the community more involved in like what is being taught, what books and publishers we work with and what the content looks like. Uh, I definitely would watch the webinars and and put in my two cents.
I like that idea too, because there's times when we've done curriculum revisions, I've been on them in the past and it's a commitment of um, you know, several weeks. And if somebody could just watch a webinar and do a survey and have their input, that way we'd get just a much broader.
And it's more people, right? You, it's not just a couple of people's input.
It would be essentially a lot more people.
It, it would be helpful um to get a better sense of a broader swath of the community uh and what their input is. Um, you know, so we wanna try it. I don't know if it'll be success or not, or if we'll say eh. Um, but we thought with math, it was a really great opportunity to try doing something different and using technology. Um, you know, certainly the, you know, the experts in the field need to be putting forth the recommendation, you know, so certainly recommendation would still come to the board from the administrative team and the teaching staff who are actually going to have to implement the programming. Um, but having that input would be invaluable um from the community. So, so we're gonna try it. Uh, we'll, we'll see how that is received and we'll report back in a couple of months.
The only thing I was thinking about that is the webinars would obviously be in English. There's no way to really translate them. Is there?
You know, we haven't gotten that far down the road. Um, you know, and and I'm not even, I I'm not sure webinars plural is what we were thinking. I think we were thinking of more of us, of one, you know, summary of, you know, this is what we've been doing. These are the, you know, publishers that we're considering, pros, cons, et cetera. Um, so, you know, I don't, it was sort of an idea in the rough. We like to run our ideas past some board members before we kind of go too far with them because if it's, if it's crazy or, you know, board members don't feel at all comfortable with it and doesn't make sense, then we kind of back it off. Um, so now that you all sort of said, yeah, we like this idea, let's go forth, you know, we'll further um, you know, understand, you know, come with a better plan and more specifics. Um, you know, and that, that would be our intention. And, you know, I can certainly find out the answer to that.
I don't know how that, I don't know either.
Um, and the last agenda issue was um staffing for twenty-three, twenty-four. DeeDee, you might have to help me remember this, but we talked about SEL needs mostly. Um, and sort of a climate, culture, supporting the students and the teachers that there's a huge nationwide, worldwide shift in students' needs after COVID that are not just academic. So one thing we talked about is just looking at how Fairview supports students and teachers and SEO. And and just to continue that growth that we're already starting, but maybe build upon it because populations and dynamics are changing. So we need to change with them. Uh, the other The other was talking about targeting students who are like, is that right, the advanced kind of?
Yeah, we talked about, again, because we're reviewing the math curriculum and the math program right now, that's sort of, our spotlight is on math. And, and one of the things, you know, that we've discussed is looking at our math intervention programs, which is heavily weighted towards students who are below grade level and need additional support. But we also have a population of stu-, and then we have our spin-out program that has the math component that is for students who are above grade level and really need that type of support. But there are students who kind of fall in between. You know, there are students who perform very well in the classroom, they're above-average students. Now, how do we keep them moving so that they can have the greatest potential in high school? You know, to place, you know, in, you know, higher level of algebra or directly into geometry. You know, so we're just kind of, because that program is under review, it's a good time to talk about the staffing as well. And so the conversation ensued about how can we, is there anything else we can do to help push our Fairview students? So, again, these are all just sort of, we were kind of brainstorming and sharing ideas and I really wanted the committee to hear the things that we're thinking about. Because, you know, as we strive to continuously improve, you know, you have to continue to be creative and be reading research and looking at what other schools are doing. And you know, there are certainly areas where, you know, Fairview can invest in, you know, some changes that could be very beneficial. So, again, you know, these are sort of ideas in the rough at this point, and the personnel plan will come to the board February, March. You know, by then we would have more strong recommendation about exactly what we're looking for, but we like to start these conversations early. So I think you summarized it perfectly.
Robust conversation about, you know, what staff is already doing, what do they need more of? And, and how that helps the Fairview students. Anything else I'm forgetting?
It just, we also had a conversation about like what's currently going on with the staff, with the extra students and stuff, and we really appreciate the teachers and all of you for like how much extra you're doing. And we really talked a lot about that. So thank you. And we're here to support however we can as a board, but we all recognize and appreciate all your hard work with all the additional add-ons to your day. So, thank you.
Definitely. Thank you. Are we done? Great. Thanks very much for that report. So the next one on my list, first time appearing on the list is our board policy representative. So Erin is going to give the report on our meeting last month.
Yes, so Mary Ann, myself, Cindy, and then Mr. Connor and Ms. Anderson had a, what I thought was a really wonderful, very productive meeting. We have taken the very large set of board policies and we've broken them down into groups and, and to come into that first meeting, our, our task was to review sort of policy one and all of the subcategories and policy eight. And we had a really great conversation about how we might be able to apply sort of a more Fairview lens. You know, we are, we are following press and we are making policy updates. But we as a board have not sort of reflected on sort of the changes that we've looked into and, and thinking about how we might make our policies more inclusive or bring them up to sort of where Fairview is today. So we had a wonderful conversation about that and came up with a lot of really great ideas. We have another meeting scheduled for February where we hope to sort of, I, I, if, please correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to, we're going to drill down more on the very specific language from policy one and policy eight, and we are also going to then start sort of a preliminary review of additional policies and we hope to sort of strategically work our way through all of the policies and, and have something, a recommendation for the board to potentially vote on changes sometime in the near future.
Yeah.
Is, is there any, I know Mr. Connor is in the audience, if there's anything that I'm leaving out?
I think you got it right. I mean, I, we worked, we worked pretty hard that day and we went through it quite fine detail and definitely one of the main goals was with that equity lens that we were making sure that it definitely encompassed all students in the school. But I think even just, there were some small things that we discovered. It's, wasn't there one thing that said something about any of the district offices? And it's like, no, well, we only have one. So just change that language, make it more pertinent to Fairview. So press, like we saw already, they're, they're keeping us up to date with legal changes, a million and one different legal references. But this is more about making our policy personal to us and what we want it to be and what we want to say. So we'll keep working at it. Okay, so Ed Redd. It was a busy month actually with, with Ed Redd. They've started doing weekly updates now. Bridgette, the Ed Redd Executive Director, Bridgette. What's her last name? Well, Peach, yeah. She's doing weekly updates now via video, so you should be getting those. If you're not, I'll make sure that you're included in the list. But she was talking most recently about the veto session. The one that she talked about in particular was not that pertinent to Fairview. In that sense, it's to not require the treasurer's for township school districts to have residency in the district. So whatever. Lame Duck Session will be taking place between January fourth and seventh. I took part in a couple of meetings this month. On December seventh, there was a regional meeting for board members. A lot of the conversation talked about the newcomers that, you know, we've had here at Fairview, and obviously there were other schools on the core that were experiencing similar things and not necessarily just those that had come from Venezuela, but you know, students coming in from Ukraine and the Middle East. So the origin wasn't really the issue at all. It was just more about how, how schools were actually handling this and how Ed Redd was moving to, to help. They have been working hard, not just with state legislators, but with national federal legislators to look for some financial relief and, and financial, further direction on how to handle all this. To that end, there is a Zoom meeting tomorrow with Representative Crespo, and I think the admin and I, I certainly will be on that call tomorrow to hear what they're actually doing. Crespo is not actually in our area. He's a representative sort of west of here. But nevertheless, he's taken up the the gauntlet to work with groups on helping them out with this situation of the influx of many, many students. I also attended a safety meeting, which was on December ninth. That was a presentation by Beth Leahy from the Firearms Safety Council of the Illinois State Police, who was giving us a lot of information on what the specifics of clear and present danger is. In other words, when there should be some kind of intervention on an individual in the area when they're deemed to be a danger to, to the school. So that was extremely interesting. The one thing I did want to mention for sure this evening is the Ed Redd Dinner. You know, I've written all this down. I didn't put the date. It's at the end of, it's always the last Monday in the last Monday in January. It's the twenty-third. It's not, it's not the thirtieth, I don't think. I think it's the twenty-third. And that's taking place up in Northbrook, which is where they had their dinner in the, in the fall. And the speaker will be, got to get this right, Kathy, Kathy Kajigian. It's an unusual name and I probably completely messed it up, but she is a specialist in public relations and she is actually Director of Communications in Glenview thirty-four. Has she occurred to me that Jordan might want to come along to the dinner actually and hear her speak? So her whole focus is about building the brand of school and working on good communication with the community. So that, that's the keynote speaker at the dinner. As well as that, they're actually having two pre-dinner sessions, one at three o'clock, one at four o'clock. So they're kind of early-ish. But the three o'clock one is actually about reimagining high school. So I'm guessing that's not really of interest to us specifically, but the second one at four o'clock is about freedom of speech in the digital age, which I definitely would want to go along to that one. So I would be very happy to go along to Ed Redd Dinner with anybody who wants to come with me. I'm happy to drive. It'd be really good if we could go as a group to, to the dinner. And meet other board members, participate in, in the workshops, attend the dinner, hear the speaker. So if you want, the registration for that is actually now open. So if you want to register for that, you need to contact Drew and she will register you, but I will definitely be going if anybody wants to come with me. So that's it for Ed Redd. The next one on my list. ISB delegate, yes. What, what did I do with that? Is it on the packet? Yeah, but is it in the packet? But I didn't bring my report with me. There we go. Okay, so Fun and Games at the ISB Resolutions, this takes place on Saturday morning and they had a new system with a little widget that you cast your vote. And just to run through those things that we, you know, we had talked about, I'm going to have to increase this because I can't read it. First of all, there were the constitutional amendments. The one that was to change the term of elected offices from one year to two years did not pass. Constitutional amendments required a two-thirds majority, so the vote of two ten to one ninety-seven was not sufficient. The constitutional amendment to have a two-thirds majority on all resolutions, that would be commencing next year, that was adopted. So that means that any resolutions that will be voted on next November, it won't just be a simple majority, but it will need to be a two-thirds majority. I think the rationale behind that was that not everybody gets to go to the conference. There are many downstate districts that just simply cannot afford to go to the conference. So they wanted it to be more robustly voted for rather than just leaving out a few. The third constitutional amendment was to change the deadline for appeals for the resolutions from the current day, eight days to another deadline. They didn't actually specify what it would be. But they said, yes, that would be good. That was adopted because having it potentially be appealed eight days before the actual conference is just too tight. So on the resolutions, the Miller Ratio Adjustment, which was to have it to advocate for it to be put into law that districts can have an accumulation of up to three times their annual expenditure, that was adopted. The Alternative Fuel Bus, that was not, do not adopt, and there was no appeal filed, so there was no vote. The firearm dealer. That one also, it did have an appeal. When it's appealed, the first vote that is taken after that is to determine if it should be considered. And then if it is considered, then it is discussed and then it is voted on. So the vote on whether it should be considered did not pass, so that was not considered. And I swear every time that comes up, everyone in the room gets confused about what they're voting for. Capital grant funding for schools, that was in the consent agenda that passed, so was School Safety Fund. The involvement in candidates for public office was putting towards that there'd be stricter rules about associations, support for particular candidates, that there'd be sort of PAC groups that, that could support candidates. There was no appeal for that, so that actually did not get voted on. Oh, I mixed that with the last one. I'm sorry. The, the number eight is the one about PACs and political parties. That was adopted. So that was saying that any school board candidates cannot accept financial contributions from special interests groups. Don't forget, this is just, this is just, this isn't law. This is actually saying that they're going to advocate for that law. So it hasn't happened yet. It may happen, but they will be fighting to do that. The one I missed was periodic review of state and federal mandates. That was adopted to have a review of language in mandates and that they be subject to a sunset provision. So everything else was adopted on the current positions, amendments and deletions. And that's my report. Gosh, that seems like months ago that I was there. You're welcome. NTDSI. Do you have a report?
Don't have a report. They are closing at eleven-thirty tomorrow. Loy Center will be closed on Friday and we're meeting in January. I'll report then.
Thank you. So Freedom of Information requests, I can report that there was one request in the last month and it was dealt with according to the law. Information items and correspondence. Mr. Secretary, is there any correspondence?
I, I don't believe so.
We have none? Good. So, public comment, at this time, I would like to invite the members of the audience to address the board. I'd last to ask them to come up to the microphone, state their names, and a three-minute time limit will be set. Are there any members of the audience that wish to make a public comment? Nope. And did we receive any online?
Mr. Haley, did we? I did receive a text message from Dr. Russo.
And?
Let me know when I can pay up. Good job, Falcons. We will get you next time.
Them straight words.
Sorry, I could hardly contain my excitement over that message.
Go Fairview. Okay, yes, well done, our girls. So action items, our last action items for this evening. So can I have a motion and a second to approve the district audit for FY twenty-two?
So moved.
Our second, Mr. Fayer, do we have some comments from you regarding this?
That's not, not yet, I don't know. So the last thing standing between us and winter break is me talking about the audit and the levy. Let's get excited. The, the audit, you had the PDF in the board packet about the audit. So typically that's sent out in October, but because of the tax delays this year, it was pushed back to December. We do have a hard copy of each of that, of that for all of you, if you want it. Do you really? Do you, for real? No, you don't.
I do look at it.
As, as far as summarizing what was in that seventy-page document, there are no findings currently, which is fantastic. It shows that all of our records are in, in good working order. All the district's finances are, we're upholding our fiscal responsibility to the district. Because really the audit is, because it's, even though it's mandatory, it's good to have that checks and balances with the district to make sure that our operations are correct, not, not just our actual figures. That's a testament to the hard work done by all of our administration and their due diligence and processing orders. Our business office, which is, you know, Jude takes a lot of that on as far as make sure everything is organized and they come in every year and are very, very happy with our organization, our processes and the way we run, we run things, which is fantastic. Yes. Yep.
You're off mic.
At some point, could I meet Jude? Because she's like Mrs. Snuffleafagus in that like, I know of her and I, she does amazing things.
Cindy, Cindy will find this funny, but I've invited her to every board meeting. Every year for the levy, or for the first at least eight years I was here. I said, Jude, I would really like you to come to a board meeting and hear me say something good about you. She's like, no, it's okay.
Would you maybe like FaceTime me in January so I can like see?
See Jude, you can stop there. She's there all the time.
Every day.
But I'm working.
Okay, so we'll, we'll organize. Okay, so we'll, we'll organize.
Cause, right, she's the Snufflefagus of the Pelicans.
She's the international woman of mystery.
Yes.
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 You know what? When, no, you won't be on the board.
Back to the audit.
Yeah, carry on.
But no, it's fine. But anyways, the one add-on to this year's audit was that we had to do a, another audit on top of this. Because we received so much money in federal funds last year due to S R. Um, but that was also, it was processed the same way and everything was in good working order. So. Everything was, it was good and everyone was happy with the way the process went, even though it was delayed by two months. So if you have any questions, obviously reach out to me. If you do want a hard copy, you want to package it for a holiday gift for someone you don't like, let me know. I can have that for you right away.
Does anybody have any questions now? Before we take action? You're off the hook. Thank you. Okay, could the secretary please call the roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Guliana?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay. We accept the board, the audit. So uh next, uh, can I have a motion and a second to approve the district calendars for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four? And twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
A second, a second. We already had the presentation about this. If there's no further questions. Um. This could be a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. I don't want to break my phone. I left it in there and I couldn't be bothered to go back. It's my fault entirely. I was banging my phone, but I don't want to break it. Okay. And finally. Uh, can I have a motion and a second to approve the FY twenty-three district levy?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Fayer, is there anything to add from your presentation last month?
What was that, Ms. Downing? No, I was just gonna run through the whole thing again. Okay. Um, no, nothing has changed since the last time we met as in regards to the levy. Uh, we are still asking for four point nine nine percent, which is below the CPI of five percent. Because we are anticipating us to be below the new property threshold as well as getting the three percent added on from Cook County uh on top of what we, what we levy. Um, it's, and the main reasons, let me just get to that slide right here. There's our, the levy. Which again, we are limited to CPI or five percent, whichever is lower. Uh, not including new property. Uh. This is the fund balance disclosure, which Ms. Brown alluded to. We already do this in the report that's given out to the board in the levy um in November. And we all, we do it for the budget as well every year as far as saying what our fund balances are. It did, um, we did have to wait. These are the audited figures. Um, so we already give that information in an informal basis. So in our documents posted online, you can find those. Uh, again, we get the additional three percent from Cook County. There are a lot of districts that are going over that five percent this year. They're requesting seven, eight percent. Uh, from my perspective, if I have numbers that say. We're not going to get that anyway, why are we going to go to the community and ask for that much more? I don't think it's fiscally responsible for us to do that. Uh, we do, we are gonna file paperwork for the three-year recapture, which is a new um, a new law that was instituted that allows us, if there is. An influx of new property that may means that we're missing out on tax dollars. We're able to go back and and recapture that in the future. And that's it. So we'll be at four point nine nine percent. Next year, we're looking at the same scenario though, because right now the CPI for next year is about six, six point three, trending between there. Um, so it will be pretty unprecedented, considering this is the first time that we've had over five percent. In the time that PTEL has been around, not to have it back-to-back years is, is pretty astounding.
Yep.
Uh, any questions, Vitha? Okay. In that case, could the secretary please call a roll call vote?
Uh, yes, I vote yes. Ms. Lenoir? Mr. Guliana?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
I'm Ms. Diakakis.
Yes.
And Ms. Brown.
Yes.
We're good. So are there any items for future consideration? No? Okay, I think we're good. Uh, in that case, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting at eight seventeen?
I'll second.
Could the secretary please call the roll call vote?
Uh, yes, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Ms. Downing? Mr. Guliana?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody.